So I know for sure we're recording out of the TV feed, I don't know about that, but I-
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, City Council meeting. If you can please stand for a break.
Hi, good evening.
This is the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Hollinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Aldeyra?
Here.
Councilmember Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Nuttill?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Is there any council member that wishes to amend the agenda in front of you?
No.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Next is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Earlier this evening, the council went into closed session. We were only able to talk about closed session, item B, and at this time, direction was given to staff. After the regular agenda, we'll close back into closed session for item A. Item five, presentation of the retirement of Officer Thor Scott, chief.
Hopefully she can read that.
Do you want to take consent? We didn't take consent.
Jody, you want to go get Thor?
Yes.
I'm not sure how much you guys know about Thor, but Thor was received in about 2015, 2016. He was recovered from Stockton Police Department, whose handler no longer was going to handle the dog. The association, the K-9 Association at that time, purchased Thor from the Stockton Police Department or the officer, I'm not sure the specifics of logistics about it, in 2015, 2016. Thor was handled by Sergeant Portenga for probably about a year, year and a half, until Sergeant Portenga resigned and Thor was then given to, hold on a minute. To Officer McDermid, who had an extreme desire to become a canine handler with the police department. So she's been working for, for about the last two years, I would guess. Thor is approximately nine years old now, so he's a big boy and he's getting up in age. And per, you know, our own observations and the training unit that we work with, you know, they started thinking that it's probably getting closer, probably about time for him to retire. So we made that decision and I'm here today, you know, wanting to retire Thor from his duties as a police canine with the Angels Camp Police Department. With that, we've got a little plaque for Thor.
That's the most exciting about a plaque you're gonna get. He thinks it's a snack.
For his service from 2016 to 2020 with Angels Camp Police Department. And I will give that over to Jody. And Jody, do you have anything to add about Thor?
Is he retiring at home with you?
Yeah, he's been around with me. He's my pet. I have my family with me too, so he'll be their, their pet too. He's been awesome. I don't think there's a better dog out there. I do a lot of training with a lot of people from Mississippi Valley, some Sacramento and stuff, and I mean, I'm a little biased, but I think he's definitely been one of the best police dogs out there.
He, just to add to, he's obviously the last year and a half now been working at the school and has been a huge asset to the school, not only for, you know, the work that he does as a police canine, but just as a social way for us, for Jody to communicate with kids and stuff, because who doesn't like a, a big police dog? And he's got that mentality that he's a very social animal and loves people, loves his pet. But he's also got a switch too that can be turned on.
Right.
And so he's been huge for us at the police department. We appreciate all the work that he's given us and, and to Jody as well.
There you go.
That's awesome.
Well, very good. Well, thank you. Thanks for watching.
Jody did bring, and I don't know what, do you want to talk about the stuff back there or is that-
So yeah, I have a cake for us, everybody, for, for Thor.
Human, human cake.
Thor's a little sensitive in this kind of thing. I'll get his, uh, help your stuff later. So, but yes, uh, anyway, there's a cake that kind of looks like him and-
Oh. Well, thank you. That was very kind.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, let's take a five-minute break. Do you want to go-
Sure. If anybody wants to cut cake, take a little break and grab some cake, please.
Yeah. You guys, if you, you guys can eat during the meeting if you want. Come back to, come back to order. And the next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Oh, thank you. We have multiple items on the consent agenda, A through F. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item off the consent agenda for discussion?
I have, I'm going to pull A, because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Yep.
So you can vote separately. Okay.
Is there any public comment? Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve B through F?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that four of them?
Yes.
Five.
Yeah, five.
Or five oh.
Five oh.
Five oh.
Yeah.
And no.
The next one.
And then the next one will be, yeah. Um, next is item A, approval of the minutes from December 17th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Veronica?
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four?
Four oh one.
Oh, one, everything. Okay. Onto our regular agenda. Item A, election of the 2020 mayor of the city council. Susan or Melissa, who's doing this?
Actually, you'll need it.
Okay.
We're just looking for a nomination.
Okay.
For mayor, somebody will nominate something.
Okay.
You guys can discuss it.
Is there any discussion or is there anyone that wishes to put in a nomination for it first and then discuss?
I'll nominate Jody, I guess.
I second it.
Okay. And then I'll open discussion at least.
Is there any discussion from the council?
Jim Spine.
Is there a public comment? Nope. Okay. Back to the council for approval. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
Okay, so now-
Okay, so now we switch.
Uh, the mayor, so we'll take over.
Okay. Literally, switch chair.
Yeah, literally switch. That's why I was like, we're gonna switch her and then-
Okay.
And so you'll be asking for a nomination for vice mayor?
Yes, I will. So we're on to regular agenda, item B, election of the 2020 Vice Mayor, City of Angels. So, um, open for discussion among the council and/or nominations.
We've discussed it.
We discussed it here. I'm nominating Alvin.
Alvin.
I'm second.
And we have, Alvin is nominated. We have a second with Veronica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we need public discussion for that?
Oh, sorry.
Public discussion on Alvin's nomination.
Anybody want to talk about it?
Seeing none, nomination and, and the election passes. Are we good?
There you go.
Congratulations.
Yes. Congratulations, both of you.
Congratulations, Jody.
Okay, item C is acceptance and swearing in of canine Valkyrie. Donated by the Angels Camp Police Department, K-9 Association. Scott Ellis, you're back up.
Okay, council, as you know, we retired canine Thor.
Left his big back here. What are we gonna do?
So with the knowledge that we were kind of under the thought that Thor was getting close to retirement, Officer McDermid and I started talking about, you know, replacement dogs, and we started talking to local vendors and, and that kind of stuff. Officer McDermid went out and located a, not really a vendor, but it's a, kind of a rescue, police canine rescue agency up out of Oregon, found canine Valkyrie. We liked her. We brought her back, ran some tests with her to see her suitability for police canine work. Liked her and purchased her from, the K-9 Association purchased her from the agency up in Oregon. And throughout the last two months, probably a month and a half to two months, Officer McDermid's been going to training with her, and she is certified, currently certified in patrol and narcotics. So when she is accepted by the city, hopefully, as a donation from our K-9 Association, she'll be able to hit the streets immediately, ready to go. So this is canine Valkyrie. We call her Val. And once again, Officer McDermid and her new police canine, and we're just asking for the city to accept her as a replacement for Thor.
How old is Val?
Three. Yeah, three. She's a, they're a Belgian Malinois, all black, which is kind of rare, and a female, which is even more rare in police work. So, kind of cool that I got paired up with females. Or not, other than I'm looking at her.
She looks a little less frisky than Thor. Is that true or-
She is a little more laid back. She's still super friendly and outgoing like Thor. That was really important when we were looking for another dog, since I'm at the school, to find a dog that's really social, like Thor is. I don't know if you'll ever find a dog quite as socialist as Thor. She's definitely a really good laid back personality like Thor has, has a switch, just like Thor too. But I think she's gonna be great with kids, a great, um, kind of ambassador for the police department as well, like Thor was.
I'm just curious, in the police world, are male or female dogs thought of in different ways, aggressiveness or anything?
The only real difference is usually size. Females are usually smaller, but you can find females with just as much drive and the same drives that the males have that can do the exact same work. I've worked around other female canines and they're no different or sometimes better than the males. So that wasn't even an issue, other than us wanting to confirm the, her size and stuff to make sure, you know, you don't want a little tiny dog that's gonna potentially get hurt.
Right.
But she's, she's been a good dog so far.
Yeah.
How's she doing with Thor?
Um, they tolerate.
They tolerate.
They both have very type A personalities, doing their jobs, so they're not together. They have two very, very large dog friends that have a huge enclosure for them each, and they don't argue through the kennel or anything, but they also don't care to even look at each other.
They're just there.
They're brothers and sisters.
So yeah, being that she's only three, I mean, we're hoping to get five, six years out of her potentially.
And the good thing with her is she came pre-started, whereas a lot of times with our canines, we get them and they just have nothing, just a real basic knowledge of how to bite work and a little bit of obedience. She came, um, she had about a year of training from the rescue group that had her put a lot of start work into her, so we kind of were able to hit training, run in, caught up with the class on this, but so, so far she's showing a lot of great talent.
She's beautiful.
Yeah.
And she's very alert.
Very alert.
Very observant, you know. I've been watching her. She's, she looks everywhere.
Yeah, she watches her surroundings, yeah. Doesn't get distracted too much.
Well, that's great.
Do we need to vote?
Yes. I'll, I'll, I'll move that we accept Valkyrie as, as our new canine police officer.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Welcome, Val.
He's like, what?
What does that mean?
Right stop, you guys. Thank you.
It's great. Nice to hear.
Now it's the real deal.
Raise your right paw. Is it Val? Stand with me.
Yeah, here, fine.
Say, and you're gonna speak for Val.
Okay.
I, Valkyrie.
I, Valkyrie.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend the Constitution of the United States.
Will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Without any mental, sorry, reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Discharge the duties that I'm about to enter.
All right.
Very well.
Well done.
Very good, Val.
And it's pain.
Good luck in the collar. There you go, baby. Look at that!
Nice.
Beautiful.
Al, the girl! Al, the girl! Look alert!
One ear up, one ear down.
Very good.
Thank you.
Pretty. Okay. All kinds of exciting stuff.
Brings us to item E, a public hearing.
No, D. D.
Wasn't that D? Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah. Presentation of Angels Camp Farmers Market. Sarah, you're up.
So I'm having difficulty loading the audio, audio player on this laptop is, does not want to play my video that I have created for us tonight. So we could, could I ask to be moved down on the agenda? See if I can get this to play?
Yeah, you want to?
No problem.
Round a little bit more?
Yeah, that would be fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, great.
We'll talk about other stuff.
All right. So we'll go on to E now. Public hearing, approval of resolution 20 dash 05, making a finding of public purpose in directing city staff to donate to the Mark Twain Elementary School District, a portion of the city alleyway adjacent to the school property off Stanislas Avenue. Amy, you've got something to tell us about that?
Mayor, council members, this is a proposal to, well, first I want to say that we have a revised resolution that I'd like to pass out. Uh, based upon our attorney's input, there is some minor revision to the resolution in your packet. The findings remain the same. Basically, what we're proposing is that the council direct the city administrator to follow through with donating a small section of alleyway to the Mark Twain Elementary School District, which butts up against their property. No one's using the alley. We are asking them to dedicate an easement over that alleyway for our public sewer system, as well as to cover any costs associated with the donation. The school themselves are thrilled at the idea of being able to secure the alley. We're asking you to make a finding of public purpose for this donation, and basically the finding that we would recommend you make is that it will help the safety of the students in that they'll be able to monitor who can and cannot come on campus. Right now, people can go from one campus parcel to another. Total strangers can waltz across the campus. As well as, this also will be able to provide a linkage between two parking areas. They can put in a sidewalk or what have you. So we're asking you to approve resolution 2005, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? It is a public hearing, so anything from the public? Well, I guess we can close the public hearing then. And you're looking for approval of the resolution 20 dash 05, looking for-
I move approval.
I'll second approval.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended. As amended, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Okay. How's the sound coming? Not yet? Okay.
We'll keep checking in with you.
I can keep stretching for a while, here.
So item F on the agenda is approval of a task order, number one, between the City of Angels and Interwest Consulting Group, in amount not to exceed 6750, to create and revise the city's building and property maintenance codes. Amy, you're up for that?
Mayor, council members, you may recall that we brought before you an SB 2 grant proposal to update the entire city code, including code enforcement provisions. That is what is before you, item F. We did receive official notification of the $160,000 being awarded to us through the SB 2 grant, and we would like to use 6,750 of it for Interwest to update what is in effect our code enforcement portion of our code. And we would just ask that you approve task order number one. Happy to answer any questions.
Council question?
What does the enforcement involve?
It's for code enforcement. Right now, we-
Bringing somebody to the-
No, it's basically, we'll revise the entire code to make it, to set out exactly what the steps will be for code enforcement. Do you issue a letter first? Do you issue a citation first? And also, we have some conflicting elements throughout our code. We have about 14 different ways to enforce the zoning and building code, and it makes it very difficult to resolve issues related to junk storage or pretty much any kind of property maintenance issue, as well as if you violated the code and you've got a use there that you're not supposed to have. You did something without getting a permit. It's a very long drawn-out process. We're trying to make it clear what the process is and make it more simple to enforce.
Do you feel this will streamline it?
Yes.
Okay.
And it'll be subject to your review and approval, as well as the attorneys.
Okay. Anything else from council? Input from the public on this? Debbie?
Good evening, mayor and council. Congratulations to the mayor and vice mayor. Um, I, on behalf of Destination Angels Camp, we support this particular project. We're concerned that $6,750 may not be enough money. The code is very outdated, very complicated. It's difficult for someone to look at it and really know what they can and cannot do, what their rights are. So I think this is a good step in going in that direction and defining and bringing it up to today's standard. Streamlining, as Veronica mentioned, we have some concerns with some of our commercial properties here in town, and when we try to address them, it's been very difficult with our current codes. So this is a good step in the right direction. I really think it's a happy medium for both sides, because from a commercial development, trying to know what those codes are and what their rights are, it's difficult to follow. And I also find that the fines that are attached to the codes are minimal and almost laughable. Someone, you know, $50 a day for some sort of code violation is nothing in the big picture with some of these violations that we have out there. And I believe too, that in this process, it'll mirror more or less what Calhoun County is doing, and they're undergoing the same kind of revision of their codes in this particular area. I do have a question to Amy, though. Does this, will this deal at all with vehicle code issues? Abandoned vehicles primarily?
It will address them in terms of junk storage of abandoned vehicles. Obviously, it won't be able to address the issue that we're facing about not being able to do anything with the abandoned vehicles, once we are able to enforce it. But hopefully, it will at least clarify anything that's questionable at this point. And of course, we'll be coordinating with the police department as we go through the code updates.
Hello. My name is Jeff, and I'm chairperson for ACBA, and also board member of DAC with Debbie. I too agree with this. I mean, if you, as Angels Camp Business Association and Destination Angels Camp and the city council, we are here to try to bring business to our community, to our town, to our city limits. For we have tax revenues, we have everything else we want, and we've got a great city to, to bring people into. We have our fishing and hunting and hiking, and we have everything to bring people here. But right now, if you drive into Angels Camp from Santa Dress area, between, um, city limits coming into Angels Camp to the downtown part of Angels Camp, there's a minimum, but there is approximately six ISOs as you come into town. And when you're trying to bring people into this town, into our city, to start a business or to start a industry or, or commercial property or whatever, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult task. And it would be nice to be able to have some stricter codes, stricter laws, and to get these things cleaned up, to bring people to our community and not outside communities.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, back to council for any final? Okay. We need a motion for this?
I'll move that we approve the Interwest Consulting Group not to exceed 6750 to create and revise the city building and property maintenance codes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. What do you think, Sarah? Not ready?
I don't think it's, yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
We'll go on to another one.
Audio player program on this laptop is not supporting, for some reason. It's the same program that I just used to open it at the ACBA office, so I think this guy needs some updates.
Probably so.
And that is very unfortunate, because that is what I was most excited for you guys to see this evening, was a nice little slideshow of the series of farmers markets and some of the great events we had there. But, um, I do have my laptop in my truck. I would like to ask for a postponement on this report, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's good.
I feel that the slideshow really adds to it and, and gives everyone a great summary of the market season, and I think it's a lot more exciting than me just standing up here and talking about the market season also. So if that's okay with the council, I would love to postpone the report.
Or did you say you had your laptop in the truck?
I do, but I just don't want to take too much of your guys' time trying to set it up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good plan.
Postpone it, sure.
Yeah, sure. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
And I'll come in, I'll come meet with Susan prior to the next city council meeting and make sure that it's gonna work. Okay, thank you.
Do you need to make a motion to postpone it? Or to put it on next?
Okay. We'll move on to G, I believe, task order number three, between the City of Angels and Augustine Planning Associates Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed 68 to 50, undertake comprehensive update for the city code and comprehensive rezoning for compliance with the general plan. Melissa, you have the lead on that?
Perfect, thank you. Amy is here to answer any questions that you might have about this scope of work. But as mentioned, it is for the comprehensive update. This is in partnership- This is in partnership with the role that Inner West will play on the code enforcement update. It is fully funded through the grant program. That program has been based upon the scope of work and the costs that Amy's identified, both in her scope as well as Inner West. And so with that, and no fiscal impacts to the citywide budget, I would recommend modification of the task order so that Amy can go ahead and, or approval of the task order, so that Amy can go ahead and begin work on this update.
Okay. Council question? Public comment on that?
Thank you. Just a question on, in this process, is, what is the opportunity for public comment, specifically for the business community on this? Has that been determined yet, or is that built into this particular cost? Two answers for the, going back to the code enforcement, they're actually going to have a workshop for the public. As for the remainder of it, we have not yet determined how much outreach we're going to need to do. We're going to play it a little bit by ear. Some of this is rezoning individual properties in accordance with the general plan, so we'll be notifying each individual property owner and negotiating with them individually. So hopefully, we'll be able to resolve issues like that on a one-on-one. We will also have a subcommittee, a planning subcommittee, that's going to be putting these together. And we will have two commissioners on it, and we would be happy to have a representative from DAC or ACBA or whomever to assist in writing the codes.
Okay. Any other comment, public or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to a move.
I move to approve task order three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Good. Okay, moving on to H, approval of task order number W 2.0 with Dewberry Drake Haglen with the City of Angels, emergency operations and floodwater plan, scope of services using grant funds. Nathan, you've got the lead, I guess.
Good evening. So back in fiscal year 2016, the city engineer at the time applied for and was successful in being awarded a DWR flood grant. Included in the grant, it was updating the city's emergency operations plan, and also to develop a floodwater plan as an addendum to the emergency operations plan. It also consisted of some training requirements for all city staff to become compliant with NIMS and SIMS as part of that grant. And we've, we've completed in-house the NIMS and SIMS training for the city employees, and we still are left with updating the emergency operations plan and also the floodwater addendum. So just due to lack of staff experience in the fire department in this, in this section, and time to accomplish a project such significant as emergency operations plan and developing a, a brand-new floodwater plan, we've looked to a consultant, Drake Haglen, who's currently on staff with, with the city, to accomplish this. They've prepared a, a RFP for this item, and it came into compliance with the amount allowed to us under the grant. The grant, the remaining balance of the grant was 53,220, and the proposal was for 50,274.
Amazing coincidence.
Yeah. But it also left a little bit of wiggle room to, you know, for any kind of an overrun or a, or a change. And, and they didn't know what the balance was before we gave it to them. So it just happened to come in that it was, it was in line with our, what we have left. So they are aware of our timeline deadline of July 2020 to have this accomplished. There are, if he spells out a plan that fits the timetable for that, it involves inter-agency workshops and input into the emergency operations plan as, as well as the floodwater plan. It develops GIS mapping for floodwater emergencies, and that'll be all included in the, the new emergency operations plan. Our current operations plan is, is old and outdated and needs some updating, so we're looking forward to this project. We think it's beneficial for the city, not just for floodwater, but for a whole gamut, you know, anywhere from PSPs to wildland fire and, and floodwater. With our recommendation, we, we recommend that we approve the task order with Drake Haglen and, and get moving on that to meet the July 2020 deadline. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Yep.
Question? Public questions? Okay.
I just want to recognize Nathan and his team for picking this project up and moving it forward. As you mentioned, we've had the funding since 2016, so I'm really happy that we're not in a position to have to return them, and that there's a willingness on their end to pursue completion of this project. So my thanks to them, because I know that their workload is such that it's difficult to accommodate, but they've stepped up to the plate.
Great. Thank you. So we're looking for a motion on task order W 2.0.
I'll move to approve task order number W 2.0.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. It brings us to correspondence. Angels Public Financing Authority Annual Continuing Disclosure Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Is that just general information for council?
Just information for council. If you have any questions about the report, I would take them back to Emily, but if there's any other questions about correspondence, I'd be happy to answer.
Done here. How about you? Yeah. Okay. All right. Number nine is council reports. Continuing the tradition, we'll start on the left. Linda?
Yeah, I'm sitting at the far left this time. My new position for a minute. It's just like whoever sets up the signs, it's just sort of like, oh, there we go. Well, let's see, I have nothing to report, you know, last month was pretty quiet, except just that there is a coming up Angels Night Out on January 18th, shopping night again. And this time, there's going to be a passport where you can go around, and as you buy things at different shops, then you can put it into a raffle and get a prize with all of the different merchants donating gift cards or whatever from their shops. So come down and shop and build music and some food, and it'll be fun. Okay?
18th, January 18th.
18th, Saturday night, starts at 5:00 and ends around 8:00.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, should be good.
Veronica?
Nothing to report, just happy new year. Let's make it a good one. I think that the city is moving in a great direction. And though it's cold outside, I'm already thinking of the farmer's market. But yeah, I'm just happy that we're, we're moving forward with the projects and getting things done, and congrats to you, Joe, Mr. Mayor, and Alvin, Mr. Vice.
Okay.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report. Happy New Years, Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Okay. The only thing I have is a solid waste task force. I don't know how long it had been since they met last, but they did meet December 19th. They did. And it kind of came to light why there's been this lack of activity. They've really had their hands full with notice of violation issues, and, you know, huge focus-related things. So I think this board will be more active in 2020 with issues coming forward. But it was a good meeting just to get to know the people that are going to sit on the board and get the background on why that's been so quiet. And the next meeting for that group is January 16th, 2020, so that's all I have. All right, calendar?
Okay. Next week, Wednesday, January 15th, IRWMA meeting for mine community and CPDA meeting with the city media office in Santa Dres. On the 16th, 8:30 PM, there's a DAC Board of Directors and also the DM Commission meeting. City offices are closed in the servants of Martin Luther Jr. Day on the 20th, and we meet back here for council on the 21st at 6:00 PM. One of the things that will be on the agenda are council appointments, and I've given you the council appointment sheet to, in preparation for that discussion at the next meeting.
In the meantime, there's no reason you can't be considering what you were on and what you might want to continue with, and provide that input directly to me. And then we can come with a draft proposal for what that structure looks like in 2020. So if you're satisfied with the things you're on, or you've got interest in one of the others, go ahead and do that and get it to us in advance, so we can speak to it on the 21st. We're all the way up to item 11, I think. We're looking for a motion. The council will adjourn into a closed session again after this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Everybody?